We are pleased to welcome everyone here to our study session. Also pleased to welcome our middle schools who are here to share their state of the school reviews. So we have Ochoa Middle School, McGlaughlin Middle School, Stevens Middle School, and I'm leaving one out, Reynolds Middle School. So Assistant Superintendent Goble, if you'll kick us off, please.
Well, good afternoon. I am waiting for, we were all getting nervous for our missing school. So I was texting Brian, I was like, "Brian, are you coming?" So hopefully Ochoa team will be here by the time you guys rotate. So we have our fantastic four middle school principals here. And it's kind of exciting way to end. This is our last of the state of schools this year between the combination of the study sessions and in-school. So this is just a reminder of the purpose and the non-purpose. And so I want to start by sharing, so you guys can see the demographics of the four middle schools. But I have started to include this in the one-pagers too, so I don't have to have the screen up. But this is always a good context about our middle schools, their total enrollment, as well as the demographics breakdown of, so you see Mac and Ochoa here. By the way, we want to give a shout-out to McGlaughlin, which was one of the winners of the... Been working really hard, so congratulations to McGlaughlin. It's one of our four schools who has been recognized by the State Board of Education. And we have Stevens Middle School and Reynolds. So by size, Reynolds has almost students, but actually Mac's numbers are going up too. So they're getting pretty close there. So there's the demographics there. And then so because there are four groups that I did ask them to do 15 minutes rather than 20, otherwise we'll be here through the whole dinnertime. So I did ask them to present, so same format, one-pagers, they have their talking points. And so one of you, if you can have a timer, have a set, once you have people sitting at your table, set your timer for 15 minutes and we'll rotate. So this is, I don't know if everybody's here, if I can ask a board member to be at the table? Ochoa's not here yet, so I don't know where they are, I'm going to try to call them. So maybe Dr. Kennedy's not here either, so there you go, they can jump to the next group. Maybe you can go with the other group. So you don't have to go to an empty table and then we'll just figure this out, right? So I'm going to go ahead and ask you to join your tables. And then I'm going to try to call Brian, make sure he gets here. So once people are at your table, you guys can go ahead and start.
So we're excited to have this year with our students. At McGlaughlin, we have got full courses. And especially now that we're meeting some similarities. Go for seven, eight graders. But it's things that we can communicate very easily. Our four teams, we have so many.
And so one of the things that we like to do is always have this sort of like a picture. Just to serve it very well. We also have tons of like this. So right here on your seat, if you're still here, if you're out there. It's a conscious experience. You're trying to think about that. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to increase trust in our community. That's what we're trying to do. So there's something to put in. Yeah, so this year, we're taking a very, like, knowing that these makes you to all of these things. But you're also, well, for you to make sure that everybody uses to. Yeah, you're making it happen. So we're just standing here on the left side. This is what our goal is. We're trying to show that our students, yes, my sixth grade families that is in eighth grade. So they're growing. And our family is that, and it's true. And she says, right. So we're doing this, we're doing this, they rank the first, but they do not pull down. Yeah. Next year, and our staff is always saying, we're going to have a great day. They don't want to change anything.
Yeah. The nice part about the pieces we did is we looked at. And you can find our work, you just have a, or ever since we gave this little market means teacher. We should, like, literal language and this, this, doing great work, like, all these things. We looked at all of that, and our goal is to kind of do what she's making around it. There is work that we're doing. And it's just, um, what we want to see every semester.
And then our staff, it goes around to that phase already. We have a really good floor to stay with for the attendance. It's before our school.
So we need to.
That was really, you should tell us. That was one of the biggest aha's. So nineteen, they, they actually have that. This was great to be opposite.
Just this one at the top, the teachers have rated it last. I think that they rated engagement or different.
It was, yeah, it was actually, it's my expectation to be very, very much expected. That was a big aha, so we saw that we think more today back there. And then we had some discussions about why, just because we're back there. I care. Accessing.
Did you, are they six graders? They're either, not the old.
Yeah, so what the students said, the leaders score. I hope they like to.
So as I'm rolling, let's feedback in the future to the student. Why don't we, let's go.
It was really cool. We have thirty-four students that have been, we've got two months, we've got fifteen kids that they need. They're great for kids, but it was cool. They said, I'm trying to be high for this, and get into all of the teacher. And then we placed them on a, and that they wanted to get their, that's their one. And one, that's the.
I was surprised, I had expectations.
My middle school kids.
It might've been challenged.
Yeah. All right, Jen, that's one of the things that we've been so frustrated this year. I just don't want to charge them any attention. Virtually everything. I thought that was a little bit weird that we expect. One of the layers we've added is rather than having one, we're not adding more, adding layers. So this year, we added a literacy intervention teacher. We stopped choosing relationships in our third grade. So we will have a master. So the third officer shows that.
I've been thinking about it for two weeks.
Oh my gosh.
I have thought about it.
It's so fascinating.
So our goal this year for math is to be by days.
Oh, no, it was just something to ensure that.
Oh, I thought you asked me something. How's the money? That's not mine.
So we're excited to be here and sharing the work of the community. We need to get a lot of room in some areas. Related to academic achievement, this year on goals, last couple of years, so readings and for math, how to guide your own research. High or typical grade, typical being one school year, but most of our students are able to work together.
Carrie. Carrie, okay, sorry, now I should know you better.
And then her third goal is to remain up to standard in school safety. Really perception of our school safety and ensure that we feel safe and valued. And so, one of the things we did this year is we restructured our school leadership to be able to raise our students to a higher standard. Our goal is to really use two separate teams, focus on social and cultural behavior. With that, we're creating a community where we're working towards a core of students who need to be in and out of the world. Everyone's going to come in here, come over their business, have an apparent engagement coming that we need with. Has really, I think, changed our student business. So, caring are academics, we're excited about this.
For example, there was a series with a period intervention where we're supporting the activity. Other goals that we're working on are student attendance. So our team has done a report that reported more success. Last year, we were, so.
A team that looks like.
This year, we've got a restructuring for night through day, which makes it a bit tense. So we are, if we go beyond what we want to do, but it's just kind of a higher school. We're going to ask first thing we're going to grow a day or getting that first. Get worked out of school or in this, also. Or basically, it's all the same. So when we look at our.
Yeah, exactly.
You're actually, that's very exciting.
Those are conversations.
Instead of the nineties, whole day. So they were even more giving them. It's our.
What you're.
So.
And so. Having those conversations with people where they're where they're at or where they're moving at. What was an opportunity to have to respect, offer to switch with, wanting to do that. Relating some of our reviews, their practice might get. So what, basically, others can celebrate all the. And then also have some company. So. Maybe we have a number four place or. Yes. God, it's amazing. They're all. What happened, how much. I had. More. I just promised you. I just said I tried my hardest. But it's all been into your turn. I'm sure that's. I see you. How we do it in fact, the turn right to work. And I think. I started. What is it? I got my three. So you have to. Most of the.
Yes.
I had a point just like five, six. But he's still like. He says, they didn't want to. Had. So when one of them. That was about. All these. That was somebody. When. So that was at a point that. Very. You would have passed.
So our next. We need to. How. And so. Every. We love that. What is that? So. With the teacher version of this, it has. Words. We make sure that in the language. Our.
Have taken it so far.
Yeah, we're doing this right now, so I don't know. The last year, I said, Jessica. Right now, we're.
So I don't want. Because it's looking clear, I'm seeing this, that said, there's something that I can't. Destroyed, or mostly, you know, the different, the differences, and it was, it's always amazing, I think. Our students that, I, here are the sessions, we did all the. Here, we're heard of. And I was surprised. That we can tell from our pictures. Of us, and these. We want to know what we're doing.
We think in time, sometimes. Yeah. They're changing, you know what I mean? And sometimes they don't, and they go. I get it. But if I feedback with you. It's really.
So.
And you can do the important now, because feedback also did.
And it was like a key to what I think went on. I will say, all the good stuff had struck. They're all important. But yeah, that. Disconnects that we had. Also. Focus. For each year to each grade. She was saying like one. They're going to focus on. Next year. And then.
Well, I was. Yeah. So my wife.
And so, yeah, with the job and those six trainings as well, one of the other things I think. For. For. If you haven't. Research that shows that you never will. So we have a teacher who does that, and we've related our classes. We target kids using Star. And she served a lot of her kids this year, and spent a ton of time with them. Stagnant for second grade, our second. For. For, I mean. The number of teachers there.
So.
It's our. Teachers, so the more portion of them is very good. So. So she runs like stations that the kids work through. So. The kids work through. And that's. That's occurring.
So. And here's what we're. The electoral. No, it's.
So that's one of the things. We're. All our students. Even newcomers. Taking the board. So that is all.
And then is that Bush P I and now.
So it's. And the kids, I don't say they work hard. They're motivated, and they have like the stuff. She does make something a job, like having a case. They're learning levels that they're. It's like the love to. And you start thinking. Towards. We use.
I can. How did you know? Yeah.
I'm pretty much. Now I notice. This time. Point is, like the test. Our. Experience. It's. And. I think that's. The last.
Um. So, yeah, that's, we've got huge gap, that's huge growth in our eighth graders this year. But I hate a lot of. Crystals.
You have huge, huge growth in this.
You are.
We're excited, I feel like that year. It's really good, it's on the. In all of our classes, we did. A couple of years ago, and then. So.
Two, just. We never. So.
Yeah, and in math, I will say, it's hard, especially just to me, because like the years. Higher, especially, they had over second. Uh, they hired. And it wasn't. So. And so we were really excited about that, and starting to look at what our team did, and what, one of the things that they did is that they. I guess they kind of. And. And maybe goals are not for Star, and goals are not for assessment, so, some of those things we really want to. I know. I was saying, I was like, the border list, but on the back, we're really excited, I had never set this data like in this way, but the, we've been working so hard around making school place the kids want to be and. And our. And to see that every one of this year, we have higher average, like our attendance rate is higher than. And that we did see the dips in the number and stuff, that we've tried to. Was like, really exciting to me, who wonder. Got.
Statistics.
Yeah. So we're, we're excited, and I think it's been since it was March, we've got. A lot of. And having. We have a lot of.
This way.
So. Celebrations in our students, our counselors have been. Their. The. The quarters. They teach them. Now. Kids that are being.
Things are passing by.
Actually. I didn't. We. We. So. Initial. So.
Well, you have a. And that's. It's. It's. Not.
That's. So. So. Like.
Thanks, I was. I was like. Has like. What kind of. Your. Your. That's. That's. I mean. And. And.
In the case of. Transition.
We're. I'm sorry. On the. I think this day is. We've been really kind of around, and we've been on all.
Well, good. Hey, we. Go sleep. Six ninety.
Like a. Like the children.
You guys. Sounds good.
Do they stay in? Okay. You're. Yeah. Chair. That's. That's. How. And then. Wow. Good for you. Hi. Yeah. Oh, thank you so much. See if I don't. Share. Julia.
Um, so we're. Here, I'd like to share a little bit about the. This year. I did our data, and we'll talk a little bit about how we've done. Around our culture and behavior, and we're excited about the great growth that we're seeing. And some of that as well, with our students, this is, I've seen, and math data doesn't show any. Because they might not have made it to perfection, that the percentage is. Higher, this is exciting. Um, this year, last couple of years, our goal for our. There's a hundred percent. But our. But our. But our. Kids. Yeah. Yeah. Um, and so, this year, we did some really important work around instruction. As we redesigned our scholarship team work, so we have a guiding collection, or a hundred thousand. Um, one of that was the. So. Besides of that trying. Previously, our, our. Have. Where all of. Construction. Um, and embedding all of our different. And that was. Um, and one of the things we've done with. Is that they really increased. Students. So. She would pass. Stay. On social. Social groups that have sticking really to. So she needs our. She's. So.
So. So. So.
You were doing. Copy. So.
So. Sure. Sure. Do you want to?
And then. So. How we. Test. But we. Forty-four percent. Circle. For this year, we're low. So. 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 We had.
Our next question. Our. And then. So. For. So. So. This is one of the. Products of this work. The. So. So. Absolutely. So we took that. Student. So they're in their. So these. And ask. Know. For. Interesting. What our student. So we took that. A student. So they're in their. So they. And ask. Know. For. For our. What our student. We're not. So. West. So they. Valuations. And. So. So. And. Yes. So we have. They're example. But in addition to. They all had. Last. This. And let's take. All of our. Back. See your. Not. So we have. So. So. We want to have. So. So. Which is. We. And it was. And. And. And it was. Um. That's. Expectation. Then. About. Don't. Check. I. I. I just. This. That's. Very. Our. So. So. Accessible. The. Free. Who.
I've been really impressed with the work that this team has done, because I think it was a different sense. For them, we have all these different. And this is finally, like, what are the common friends that we know? And then also. And so, like, here, I was talking, like, as we walk classes. Teachers, it's changed the way that I give feedback, because it seems to be common language that they can go back to, and they have sources to go from. Um, when, when our teams are not. But it's exciting, um, the conversation was, was interesting when I did it with. Many. Kids. Which I thought was. Yes, interesting, like depending on. Which was important to them.
I think. So. They know. So. So. And. Now. They were. Conversation. Of course. They were. You initially have. Support. And. So there's support. So.
That's what we've done. On that next. The. Each. And. So. And. One of the other things we. Really looking to ensure that. For. For. All their. And. Have. Challenge. Um, with that, we added. Support. Literacy. So. Um, research shows that. The. Like. So we added. So. So. Some really short knowledge about reading. And. And they, um, it's nice. So they test in. And they work. Once they're, once they hit. Their exit point, their needs. So it's really. Because they. And then they see. Exit. Right, um, but we've had a number of kids. We have. Four. Students. Um. And so I think. We had a huge. This year, three years ago. My first year. And. So. Really happy. Seven. So. So. Pretty excited. Um.
Do you want to. And.
And then. Uh. Yeah, I literally. We've done a lot of work. Games. Are both. Big survey of parents. Survey. Um, they. I'm closing gaps in. Um, I was really excited. I had never looked at our. Like, in this. Ahead of where we were last year, almost every single month, and we didn't have, like, the different November and summer that we typically would have. Atured that to. And. Active. We had. Children. Um, teacher expectations. They. We actually teach this every. And I think it's in all our school where, like, when we said, like, hey, your four teachers would want four area. Reteach, like, five percent. No. We're all. And we. Forty-five percent. Life. So. How did you play your frustration? And. Your complex. Kind of the middle school experience. And so, that's been really awesome, and we're one of the. So. I'm. We. We're excited. And. Um, and so it's been. And. We would. He did it his first time on spring. I'm the one. Highest. Never. But. And we've been in that. Little. Now. Doing very, very well. So. So, um, a lot of really great work.
I think. The power. You made all the. Something. I should.
Yeah, um, with attendance, we have, um, monthly attendance celebrations. The regular. Um. We also have. Where. Model, these are around attendance, and they provide a danger to kids who are. And then we're really. Like. Whether it's that. Or. Or all those. And. And so they, they feel. To. To. Yeah. And. Have. We have. Definitely. For. That. I had. She's. She's. The whole time. Danica didn't hear what you said. She's been. Like. She's. Said it. I'm like, I know you're. Yeah. She's. Oh. Your wife's. Science. Because. All my. Five. I'm still. Really. Really. Yeah. Yeah. I'm so. So. Like. Your. Your. But. We. So. We. The. System. That. We. That was. Number four. That was your. Kind of. Bottom. Parents. You. Like. 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 Yeah. Yeah. Like. I was. Having. Then. I know. It was. That I know you. It's like. Everyone doesn't. How many years in middle school? They. Um. That. That. Gap. They. Was. Like. A. 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 She does this every time. She teaches. She calls out. She's. I know. She's. She. Yeah. By. The. Right. Here. We have. That. And. Dance. So. Yeah. So. It's. Right. And. So. Guys. We're like. We're actually. You. I had. My. Class. Two. So. We have. Okay. And. You know. It's more like the. Algebra. Level. Classes. But. I was. I. Over. Last. And. We're looking at the. High. Dude. I'm alert. It's like random stuff. So. What are you? Excited? It's. 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 Clearly. I'm still there. Yeah. I was. Today. I did. All these. Yeah. So. That's. I know. I know. It's. 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 I'm. 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 I'll be going. And. Please. Graduated. Well. Um, I'm majoring. In. The. And. 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 Back. Yeah. 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 I. 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 Why not? Why not? I'm. Joey. Thank you. Alright. You're all good. Um. I'm. 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 All. Thank you. Thank you. Alright. You're all good. Um. I'm. 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 Because. You're late. You're. I said. So. Okay. So. The. Time. We. We. He's. He's. I'm. 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 Alright. Um. Our. Our goal. Accessible. Um, for. Even. Now. Percent of kids. They. Um, we're. Being. Being. Um, the high. Be more. Always. A lot of our kids. Feedback.[797.02]